Friday meeting, it's hot so everyone can get out and enjoy this beautiful weather. So we're gonna call the meeting to order, could we all stand for the pledge?
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call.
Al.
Terry.
Present.
Michelle.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Liz.
Here.
And then Doran.
Here.
Juanita.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
Julie.
Okay, thank you. We've gone down the agenda, public participation, could you read the script, Lauren?
Sure.
The Board of Education welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please length their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or inflammatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students, nor against any person connected to the Danbury Public School system.
Thank you, Lauren. Our first speaker is Zachary.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you and for gathering here today. I stand before you to address an urgent matter that affects not just our children, but the future of our community in need to sustain and invest in music education. Across our district, there are many threats to silence and melodies and rhythms that are vital to well-rounded education. Music programs are often the first to go in a school district, but I'm here to urge you that they should be the last. Music education is not a luxury, it's a necessity. It nurtures creativity, fosters discipline, enhances cognitive skills. Studies such as one from the National Institutes of Health have shown that children who participate in music programs perform better in math and science, exhibit improved reading abilities, and develop stronger social skills. Music is a universal language that bridges cultural and social divides, teaching our children the value of collaboration and empathy. I'm gonna be attending the Peabody Conservatory at Johns Hopkins University, and I'm gonna be majoring in jazz studies. Music education has been a crucial part of my life since I was five years old. In 4th grade, I discovered a love for saxophone and many supportive music at teachers in elementary school that helped foster this passion. By only having music classes one day a week, it becomes very difficult for students to immerse themselves in the healing power of music and develop crucial skills needed to pursue music long-term. For example, we currently see massive struggles in the music program here at DHS, specifically the band. Low involvement, careless participation, and lack of skill development can easily be avoided as long as we support music education at the elementary level. Maintaining a robust music curriculum K-12 is essential for fostering a strong and dynamic program at the high school level. Early exposure to music education sets the foundation for advanced learning, allowing students to progressively build their skills and knowledge over time. By starting early, students develop fundamental musical abilities and a deep appreciation for the arts. This continuous comprehensive approach ensures that by the time students reach high school, they possess a solid technical proficiency and a sophisticated understanding of music. If we support music education at the elementary level, Danbury has the potential to have a successful program that will provide a platform to further success and reputation in our district. Moreover, music provides an emotional outlet for young minds, helping them navigate complexities of growing up. In a world where stress and anxiety levels are rising, the joy and solace found in music can be a powerful counterbalance. For many children, music is not just an extracurricular activity, it's a lifeline. It's a source of confidence and a space for self-expression. To cut these programs is to rob our children of these invaluable experiences. It is to deny them the opportunity to discover their passions and to develop their potential to make the fullest extent. We must recognize that the true measure of school success is not only in test scores, but in the well-rounded development of its students. I urge you all to join me in advocating for this preservation and enhancement of our music education at the Danbury Public Schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Zachary. Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen Muller, and I'm the speaker tonight as a parent of two children within the Danbury Public Schools. I'm also here to advocate for keeping music education strong in the Danbury Public Schools. Elementary music education is an important foundation, not just for raising musicians, but for raising all kinds of kids. This is something that you want to keep by. Anybody who's been to the grocery store knows you can't get everything you want. But this is so important that I want to talk about it. When we make cuts to elementary music education, we're not just cutting music education, we're cutting so many different things. It transcends so many different aspects of the educational experience. You're cutting the opportunity for kids to build skills in an area that maybe they didn't think that they could. Music and math share so many things together. You'd be stopping an opportunity for parents or kids to be able to understand times of each rhythm, there's a mathematical progression through music. This is a way to tap into some of these skills that we know kids are struggling with in a different way, and maybe some kids one different way. You'd be stopping the opportunity for teamwork and being able to work together and learn. As kids develop their skills, we begin to play in the song, which one of the things that they really need to learn how to do is to listen and to listen to what else is going on, to listen to where their heart is, to work together. I don't think anybody can say that we don't have people who will have listened well. And it also provides opportunities for leadership and community service, and just the joy of being able to share music with other people. And it comes to sharing this, not because I am the parent of two professional musicians. What I am is the parent of two scientists and scientists to be, and it is not a coincidence that they are kids who have music education and are grown education, working with them to continue with that. My family, like many others, would not have known how to get them connected at an early age. I am not musical, people tell you. So the idea that the school has the opportunity for them to have trained teachers, to have this happen at the elementary level, where they could just go to school and take these lessons, was the reason why it was able for my family for certain others to be able to take it with them. So I appreciate you, please take this into consideration and understand how important it is, not just for kids who want to go on with professional musicians, but for every kid to have these opportunities.
Thank you. Matthew?
Evening members of the Board, my name is Matthew Berger. I am a school psychologist, network for an organization called Rockland County BOCES in Rockland County, New York. I've been working for the organization for over 23 years. I've had opportunities to work extensively with elementary and secondary students in my career. And I can tell you firsthand that the benefits of a robust musical education component in a child's academic day is not just an important piece of their overall educational progress, but provides, I think, outlets for what currently is trending in terms of social-emotional learning. Music education provides opportunities for students to develop competency and improvement in areas such as grit, perseverance, self-confidence, self-reliance. For students, especially those who struggle academically, which is the majority of the students I've worked with in my career, have that as part of their reasoning for being in the various programs I've worked in. One of the joys of their day was to be able to participate in a variety of musical, educational components of their school day, whether it is choral, instrumental, strings, brass, percussion. Now that I've worked in the secondary level, I have to work with several students who benefited from that type of educational programming in their various elementary schools, whether it was in Rockland County, Westchester County, Orange County. And it helped them develop, despite various academic and social-emotional challenges, the confidence to go on stage and perform, not just in front of our school program, but I had one student perform at a school coffee house. And I believe that musical education transcends what is taught in the classroom per se because it further develops that social-emotional piece. And without a stable social-emotional grounding, our ability to initiate, plan, organize, and complete routine or complex tasks can be somewhat limited. So if we look at musical education as part of, one part of how we can help develop children and adolescents' social-emotional learning over time, in the long run, the benefits of keeping a music educational program in Danbury as robust as possible would outweigh any short-term, I think, cost or benefits that I guess is some of the reason behind why this issue has come to play. I just worked out last night for my wife, who just spoke before me, so I wanted to just present it from a more personal standpoint. Obviously, I have the same two kids who went through the Danbury is program and succeeded wonderfully. So thank you for listening.
And thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing your experience and your concerns to the board. Just before we move on, I just wanted to say, and I don't know how many of you know, when you bring your concerns to the board, we do not dialogue back and forth. We ask you to bring your concerns here, and we sort of listen, and then we discuss it later on at the board, okay? And thank you. Is there anyone that did not get an opportunity to sign up? Yes.
I got lost, I'm sorry.
Can I speak?
Come back to the front, yes.
I love our music before entering Danbury Public Schools.
Could you state your name?
My name is Shawzia Aladdin, I actually graduated DHS. I love our music before entering Danbury Public Schools, however, being able to join band in 5th grade was the biggest blessing of my life. At 10 years old, I barely stood the schedule for what we met, but I loved being able to learn how to create music or understand what a drum roll is. This time in the class was not time to be cool or see friends, but time to do something that made me happy. Yes, in our turn, I missed some classwork, but that was a small price to pay, a small price to pay for something I loved. King Street percussion set the groundwork for my biggest hobby today. I have fond memories of playing the Bach drums and plucking rhythms in my mother's school education, but I don't think I would have pursued percussion without the lessons offered at King Street. They gave me the opportunity to really focus on mastering one instrument and truly grow as a musician. After King Street, I was part of Westside's band for three years and DHS marching band for five years, I started in 5th grade. I was enrolled in percussion ensemble for all four years of high school. I got the opportunity to perform at Boston's Princeton Market and the Hershey Park branch of Music in the Parks. And now I'm committed to you, Paul, I'm gonna be in the marching band, the pep band, and any other ensemble I can find. More than just giving me time to relax and have fun, this is how we count lessons that are not offered in classes. Missing time or missing class time and staying after school taught me how to manage my time and still graduate as 19th in my class of 800, while pursuing hobbies that I enjoy. Long practices, greater shine, difficult music taught me discipline, grit, and commitment. Being section leader and percussion captain taught me to organize sectionals, cooperate, communicate with my peers, and teach my section while still staying on top of my own music. Of course, the friends that I made in the band are my dearest, and I have never felt safer within a group until I began to beg my moms to stay late even after all their competitions, that I could spend more time with my people. And band is a team activity, which forces you to become friends with people around you. And the people I've played with, whether it's for one year or five years, have become some of my closest allies. Band played a vital role in child development, and it's so important that we offer that to our students. I understand the lessons are being cut back, but I worry, when your kid tries rock, then they spit it out and say, "Give it another try." But if the try is a week later, it's not as effective. Learning how to hold a drumstick, performing armchair is not always comfortable the first time. And if our kids are just barely exposed to music, their balance isn't like it. Our band, we spent basically 4th, and we have a banner hanging in our band room, but the band is not nearly the size of what it was. Learning takes regular practice, band is not just a game, it's a class. And if we're not ready to practice it, we are not one to have the same commitment that we're seeing. I've been trying my hardest with Miss Andino to get young musicians into the program, but I really ask you for all your support because that's what we need to build our program, thank you so much.
Thank you. That completes our public participation, unless there's someone that gave you the opportunity to sign up. Seeing none, Michelle, can you do the consent calendar?
Okay, motion that the Board of, motion that the Board of Education approve consent calendar exhibits 24 through 140 and 24 through 141 as recommended in accordance with amended regular board six, June 5th, 24, regular board meeting exhibits 24 through 140 and June 10th, 24, Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, 24 through 141 exhibits.
Thank you, Michelle, motion made by Michelle, could I second? Second of that kit, are there any questions concerning the consent calendar? Seeing none, all in favor, could I hear aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so care. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any students? No presentations. Our board subcommittees, review. Community relations.
Unfortunately, we had to cancel our last community relations meeting. We had a reservation by our dean who was supposed to be at that meeting, so I'm hoping that we can convene the committee over the summer. We need to work on some planning for a fall that we elect to meet together.
Mr. Ricklin?
The Ricklin Committee met in May, question? What did the minutes for that meeting? Okay, well, we'll revisit that.
I go back to my notes and see, and we can, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna, no, just we had a presentation, sorry, I was hyper-focused on the minutes.
Okay, we'll submit all of that, it was on the curriculum process and the things that were coming online with the academy, along with the central curriculum overview, and all that goes into that, so we can submit a lot of information. We submit that for the minutes, thank you.
Finance committee?
Last night, we had a meeting of the finance committee, it was a lengthy agenda. Thank you to Kate Canaveral, who did a wonderful job presenting the minutes. I asked Karen to have at your place setting this evening the minutes that Kate had taken regarding the meeting last night, which is extremely detailed, and it saves a lot of time to just regurgitate that this evening. I think you'll find the minutes very informative, thank you.
Does any board members have any particular question that they want to ask Mr. Genella at this time, before we move on? We have the minutes, yes.
I'd just like to remark that there was some information about the funding sources for next year that were presented, that the numbers were not accurate on the information that we presented with, but you'll find that the minutes reflect different information that is accurate to our funding for next year.
Thank you. Policy?
Unfortunately, we also had to cancel our most recent policy committee. We had a superintendent evaluation meeting that evening that didn't run past the time we anticipated. At this point, we're going to look towards the fall to schedule our next meeting, where we will finalize the last section of the 4,000 series before we move on.
Flagging, so.
We just had a sites and facilities meeting this past Monday, where we narrowed down the names of the new high school and the educational complex, which we will be reviewing.
Any questions concerning that? Yes.
I'd just like to make one additional announcement. We, I'm sure you all received an announcement from Kate indicating some webinar classes that had to do with financing, the budget, etc. If you have the opportunity, I would strongly suggest that you look at the schedules and sign up for any of the webinars. They should be extremely informative, thank you.
Action item A, if there are no questions, action item A, I have her, Juanita. To make a motion that the, make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 Leader in Educator Evaluation and Support Plan as recommended by the PDEC Committee in accordance with 24-142. Motion made by Juanita, could I hear a second to that motion? Second, Louisa? Any questions? Superintendent, did you want to elaborate on that in the reason that we're doing this?
So, the state of Connecticut, thank you, the state of Connecticut has issued new guidelines for teacher and administrator evaluation. And the PDEC Committee was sort of reinvigorated to have a wide body of stakeholders that represent the administrative group, the teacher group, paraprofessionals, and they've engaged in a deep study of those guidelines and have been working together to fall in line with those guidelines and the creation of our own Danbury Leader in Educator Evaluations Support Plan, which is presented here. Our plan actually went, had to be submitted to the state for preliminary approval and feedback, and they sent it back and we give a big thumbs up. And so we are in really good shape, so we feel comfortable enough to go ahead and finalize that. I'd like to think Dr. Anna Rocco is here today, she's been leading the PDEC group through that process. And our plan is very similar to the one that the state put out, so we pretty much mirror what the expectations are almost exactly. We started our training series today, we kicked off with our administrators, and we'll be starting with the teachers in the hall.
Since there's a motion on the floor, we need to carry the motion through. You've heard the motion?
Second. Louisa's second.
I second Louisa's second.
Louisa's second, we've got second, so thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so care. Action item B, Louisa?
Official naming of the new Career Academy building at former site of Cartus from a recommendation by the Sites and Facilities Committee. First motion, to name the new site formerly the Cartus Building on Apple Bridge to Danbury Public Schools Education Complex.
Second.
Motion made by Louisa, second by Kate, in a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, could I hear aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so care. The second part to that motion, Louisa?
Motion to name the new high school portion of the site formally referred to as Danbury Career Academy at the Cartus Site on Apple Bridge, Danbury High School West.
Motion made by Louisa, could I hear a second? Second by Lauren, in a discussion concerning motion. Seeing none, all in favor, could I hear aye?
Aye.
Motion so care. Kate, action item C.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education accept the May 2024 financial report as recommended by the Finance Committee and in accordance with 24-143.
Motion made by Kate, could I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by?
Julie.
Richard?
Oh, no.
Julie, I'm sorry. Second by Julie, in a discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, could I hear aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so care. Action item D, Mr. Genella?
Motion that the Board of Education adopt the 24-25 Danbury Public Schools operating budget. Motion that the Board of Education adopt the 2024-25 Danbury Public Schools operating budget, in amount of $167,500,000, consisting of $160 million from the city of Danbury and anticipated one-time for creation of $7,500,000 from the city of Danbury through the American Rescue Plan Fund from the state of Connecticut, pursuant to Public Act Number 24-81 in accordance with 24-144.
Motion made by Mr. Genella, could I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Kate, in a question, discussion?
Teresa? I just want to go on the record, I'm not happy with the proposed budget.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, could I hear aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
You abstaining?
Abstaining.
You abstaining, okay, so we have two abstaining.
And you.
Okay, so we have three people that are abstaining. So the motion is to move forward. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on summer school. There's still some questions around what was, what's being, what's being bribed for summer school. So Dr. Rocco's just gonna update us on the dates and who's involved, and when is that, when that is all taking place.
Good evening, everyone, happy to be here tonight to update you on our summer school programs. We do have three programs going on, one is our elementary K-3 program, and the second is the DHS Credit Recovery Program, and the third is the ESPR program, also through Mrs. George's desk. We currently have approximately 750 students who will attend the K-3 elementary summer program. It will be offered at two sites this year, Ellsworth Elementary School and Millridge Primary will be our two host sites. We divide the students pretty much by schools within the two sites to keep a balance between the two sites as equal as possible. We have 55 teachers who will be working for the summer. We have two site directors, we have Matt Calvines, who will be the site director of Millridge Primary, and Heidi Fowler, who will be the site director at Ellsworth. They both have site directors with us for the last three years, so they're very well versed in how summer school runs and working well with transportation, coordinating, all of those athletes can do a great job. We thank them for returning every year because they know they're in good, we're in good hands with them. We do have the student hours, and will run from July 8th through July 25th. Classes run Monday through Thursday, but each of those three weeks, the student hours are 8:30 to 12:30. This year, we reduced the program in the number of weeks, but we extended the time of day. So students are getting the same amount of hours of service, but they're getting it over a shorter period of time. It works out well because the students are there for a longer day versus shorter periods of time over the course of the four weeks, to run it through weeks instead. Transportation, Ed Watson's done a phenomenal job, as she does every year, rerouting buses and creating buses every year. So that's going underway. We are offering the DHS Credit Recovery, it'll be offered at Westside Middle School this year. Vicky Carlson is the director of that program. Vicky, again, longtime, standing director of that program, she does a phenomenal job. And she has lots of other duties over the course of the summer in terms of helping students with registration and things like that for high school. They are working on a recovery model, students will be engaged in using Edunee over the course of the time. We currently have 62 students who are enrolled, and Vicky shared with me today that it's not unusual to get a huge uptick of enrollments about a weekend before the first semester starts. And first semester enrollment tends to be a little bit lower than the second semester enrollment. So we're on a pretty par from where we were last year, last year we serviced about 190. So, we're on a pretty par from where we were last year, last year we serviced about a hundred and ninety students in that program. We have sixty-two registered for the first semester, but we expect that number will increase. Uh, that program is paid for by students through credit recovery, so the cost of tuition paid by students offsets the cost, um, of salaries to the teachers in the program. Right now, there are six teachers in that program. The teachers are assigned based on enrollment, so of course, it drives the number of teachers in that program. Uh, I didn't tell you about the, um, curriculum for the elementary summer program, our, uh, coaches and the department has the elementary supervisors have been working very hard to create a very cohesive program that will be very engaging for students over the summer. So, they'll be reading and math components, they'll go to the programs, they will split the day approximately with half math and half literacy. Students will also receive breakfast and lunch during the time that they're there. Um, the, the program, we try to make it as engaging as possible to keep students wanting to come back every day in the summer program. So, we try to make it fun, engaging, I'm not sure, um, high school students will feel the same way, but, uh, we do our best for our elementary students. Any more to add to your question?
So, the special education summer school program is going to start July first and it will run, uh, through August first. Uh, so it is slightly longer, it's a five-week, um, program. It services students with special needs that are entitled to summer programming and that's determined through their, their planning placement, their names. Uh, these are for students that are typically more significant in needs, um, and that we would, uh, the rationale behind providing the program is to ensure that their summer slide, uh, that students are not going to regress in their academic, social, emotional, behavioral skills as a result of being home for summer for two months. Um, and we have approximately three hundred students attending the program. We will typically get another fifty students that enroll the first week of summer programming. Um, so we are staffed at about forty-five certified staff members, it's twenty-two classroom teachers, a lot of related services staff, uh, school psychologists, social workers, OTs, PTs, speech and language pathologists. Um, the hours of the programs for students are eight fifteen to one, um, and that is for our kindergarten and up students. So, we have students from three to twenty-two, um, so it is a wide range of students, we hosted at, um, AIS. And we do have a half-day, uh, program for preschoolers, so those are the only students with a short day, they come in for about, uh, two hours and thirty minutes. Um, in addition, the students also receive breakfast and lunch. Um, and the sole purpose of that program is to reinforce skill building on their, on their individualized educational programs. So, it's a fun time, um, we'll have, um, Rosa Larsen, who is one of our PPT facilitators running, uh, that program, uh, as well as one of the special ed supervisors that will support, um, and myself, and Crystal Taft, uh, also providing support. We have, and Kelly, same thing, has done a wonderful job of transportation, and we have post-infront of you classes running for the students.
Mr. Gennella.
Kelly, what facilities are these classes at?
So, we're at, um, AIS for the summer, um, so we occupy the entire building.
And if possible, we wanted to visit and observe the facilities.
We'd love to have.
Get in touch with you?
Yeah, absolutely, get in touch with me and we would love to have you.
Thank you.
Of course. It's a, it's a, it's a good program to see, I think it, it would show kind of some things across the district and I would invite anyone who wants to come in. You're welcome to.
Ms. Mar.
Thank you, I'm not sure that all of the board members are familiar with the edutainment, uh, program. Can you tell us, is it in-person? Is it, um, an instructor teaching the subject in front of students?
So, I can tell you the instructor of the summer program, I, I would ask Dr. Casemiro's before specifically about edutainment itself. Um, but during the summer program, students will attend at Westside Middle School while they are engaging in edutainment. So, they will be assigned an instructor based on course and the instructor will be there with, um, at Westside Middle School. So, they can provide support and, and they can monitor the program, the suit use of the program a lot, they're using it. The instructor will be present on that one side.
But the students are, um, using an online program?
It is an online program that they are.
The teachers are just not.
With the instructor there, providing support.
Louisa.
Thank you. Um, I know that you talked about elementary and the high school, are we offering anything for middle school? I know we eliminated summer school for middle school last year, but any, but what are we doing for the kids that may need support over the summer at that level?
We are now offering a middle school program this summer, um, there were budgetary restrictions that were applied for the middle school program. Casemiro does report to, to that piece. So, we did, um, have at one point, we've, we've alternated over the years, we've had to be able to offer K-five. Uh, we're down to K-three, um, we did try a middle school program, so students who struggle with organizational skills, in particular, who've been passed multiple classes, um, to have a PBL-like experience to engage students. But the, the, between the transportation and securing the teachers, over the last couple of years, securing teachers has been one of our biggest hurdles. Um, and we've been fortunate, we have our K-three staff in place, we've had to up the, the hourly rate to retain those, those staff members that we have enough to at least meet our legal, um, obligations for students in grades K-three who aren't considered substantially deficient in literacy. So, that's the indicator, that's the flag for offering though. Um, and then we carved so many out of our priority and alliance, uh, as a set size for that. But the, one of the biggest costs and expenses is really around the transportation, um, and also securing the number of teachers that are needed to do it. High school's a little bit different, the credit recovery is a little bit easier sell, um, if you will, and worrying to service a lot more students in that model because of the online internal platform. So, the supervisory, the supervision pieces is very different than, uh, than we had in the past. But, um, yes, we would love to offer something more robust, K-eight, parents definitely require about that. And particularly around organizational skills, getting kids ready for the high school. Because it's more often than not, a student, student who's not doing well in all classes, it's, it's more of an engagement issue than anything. Um, wanting to be there or having the organizational skills to get it together or, you know, being able to navigate six, seven, eight classes. So, that's something that I know that we're, we are interested in and we're going to continue to pursue, um, big funding sources for that.
Theresa.
Uh, what happens to the students who do need this in the middle school? Are they still advanced?
They are.
More quick. Okay, Julie?
Uh, Dr. Casemiro, you mentioned the legal obligation, the transportation cost, how exactly are we measuring the success of the kids from K to twelve, K to three, I'm sorry, um, when they come up from, uh, uh, somewhere, uh, chances?
Yes, so we have to have assessment indicators, so we do have a program, uh, we have DIBL's assessment, we have an I-Rate assessment. And so, we know coming into the program where the kids, we have the indicators that flag them for the program. That data is, is what we use, um, and we monitor, there's a lot of subset data behind that. So that we know where to target specifically the skill gaps that are there. So, it's a limited window of time to work with students. Um, ideally, we'd love to go year-round, students who are in a substantially deficient category, because what happens is there's something called summer slide, where when the students don't stay wet with the literacy and reading, um, they tend to slide backward and we, we lose a little ground. But, uh, we do have assess, an assessment system in place to monitor how students are doing. But it's a very small window, so the progress bumps that you see are, are, are small, but it's really more about keeping students in contact with literacy and small construction and really targeting, um, most common areas for efficiency in K-three, which are kinetic based. You sent quite a bit of information, obviously, to the summer school teachers, from the school, so they have a place to understand if there are students circling in. Uh, the directors will also work, looking at the levels of students and trying to cluster kids together, so they might cross groups, some students from some schools, so their teachers can best meet their needs in small group instruction, um, not trying to go across a broad, with students in a little ease, but trying to get closer to where they can access the curriculum with their best team time this summer to sustain their skills across the summer.
So, and the same question, I just want to make sure, are we actually balancing the cost, transportation, um, how in all this, um, individuals coming into the summer to cover that fifty-five, um, we have fifty-five students and an average, you say seven hundred and fifty students, are we actually being able to comment, is this some budgeting that will be eventually rolled out?
So, I just want to make sure, I understand your question, it's about, do we, like, do we budget for that summer school program? We do, we budget a particular amount every year based on where we think, um, the number of students will land. Now, the number of students that get invited and the number of students actually tend, attend are, are different. And so, we tend to kind of navigate that middle ground, um, in terms of projecting the cost for summer school. Sometimes we go overs, because I wonder.
So, just to clear here, this second hundred and fifty students is an average, it's not a, an exact number, it's just the amount of invitations that you have to send out to the parents.
Anna would have it. Yeah, we, we extended invitation to a little over a thousand students, twenty-ten summer schools, seven hundred and thirty, yes, nine thirty and seven hundred and fifty have committed so far to attend. Um, but we see a little bit of uptick again the week before, some parents forgot to send a form back and they give us a call. But right now, that is the number that is, is registered to attend. So, is it Googleable or not? Um, it, it will be around that, it won't, it won't go much more, um, because we can't really roll students in once it starts. It is a three-week program, so by the time you get transportation arranged, uh, for a student who didn't, who didn't have their information in advance, it's hard to get them in once, once it's already started. Transportation takes a long, long time to re, reroute everyone from the regular bus routes.
Ms. Mar.
So, I'm going to, I was going to ask the same question about how many students and can we offer, you know, services to everyone? So, we are able to extend it to anybody in the community that?
No.
So, when we send out the thousand invites, who do they go to, is it open or specific?
Good question, they, they go to the students who are flagged as substantially deficient, so they have, not obtained a certain level of achievement on for their grade level, um, in literacy. And it's, it's, what we offer a literacy and a numeracy component to it, because generous students tend to need both anyways. So, we, while we have them there, we'll give them both. Um, but it's the, it's their literacy stores that flag their invitation for summer school.
So, I know that you consider transportation and all the good things we would have considered, but is that even a program that we can offer online? Just if I was a parent and I wanted to get online and I'm not, you know, even if my child is advanced or maybe behind, they may not be in that class, but their skill may be right at that level. Is that something that we could offer? How would it cost the district to kind of, is that something that could be an online program? Not that I'm, you know, a big fan of it, but the program is already online, it seems, and you have.
No, so this is, this is an in-person, so that's about, so it's just to, just to clarify, the edutainment is the high school and that's an online program.
The program itself.
Competency-based skill program, yes. The K-three program is in-person, so we have a physical teacher working with a group of students, um, on their reading, on their reading issues. And what you're asking, what I'm hearing you're asking is for, for any parent who would like some additional support, do we have anything? And right now, um, we do not, we do make available some links, things for the summer that we encourage parents to work with your child, we have a lot of game-based activities. So, things that are fun that a child can do independently, um, on their own, but, uh, for the most part, it is, the K-three component is an in-person direct instruction program. We'd love to offer something, you know, especially, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we, we know, hey, we're able to, we're able to deliver instruction online, uh, in a pretty decent format, um, that might be great for other, but it still requires the teacher being present with the students. The students are going to be monitored at home with the parents. And finding the staff to do that has been a challenge and we're very fortunate to get the staff that we did to commit to the, the K-three group, which is our, the legal mandated group that we're, that we need to offer that to, but yes.
So, none of the programs that we recently purchased, as we did last, we offer that option of parents being able to utilize those tools?
But there's, there are some online, uh, online components, and again, we made, when we did the K-12 interactive site during the pandemic, when we went online, we, we made a, available, uh, a lot of online programs that were free for parents to, to click on. So, the teachers, yeah, so those are still available. And there, there are none of the things that we necessarily purchased, but ones that we've endorsed, because I think these are good for kids, use these over the summer.
Just because I had a son that had a lot of organized, you know, a lot of issues, and I remember just reaching out, looking for programs in the summer, you know, just because of that slide. So, if, even if it was something available online or in a different language, whatever the case, that would have assisted, that would have helped me.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, Julie. Um, and this is just for the whole, uh, this, in general, I really don't understand, how can we afford, um, from K to three, um, this program for some kind of middle school, we don't actually support, we don't help what you for this. And then we expect the kids, teenagers to engage again, um, to cover any of the credits. When we have left them out since, uh, middle school, we just picked a little bit on, um, the first years, then we live in hope to then develop on their own. And then we expect them to again pick up on what is expected for them to do, uh, during summer, have time, have fun and not come to school. I mean, I really, it doesn't make sense to me that we have, um, K to three, uh, program and then we have summer, uh, program for the students. I mean, in general, it doesn't make sense to me. That's it, thank you.
Julie, I agree with you, I, I, I would love to have K-12 after school, before school and after school and summer programming. I'd love to offer a year-round component, because we have some students who need that acceleration, um, for sure. Right now, we're offering the legally required component, um, because of the enormous, um, expense that is incurred on that. And then that expense has risen over the last couple of years because we're unable to get the staff to commit the old per diem rate, uh, hourly rate that we used to offer. So, now to, to, to attract staff to do that, that's almost double, you know, rate to, to attract that same staff. Um, and, and still with that, are not as willing to give up the summers anymore. Um, so, we are, you know, right now, we, our main concern is making sure we meet legal requirements. However, um, you know, if we had, you know, another million or two dollars more dedicated to that and we were able to recruit staff and we're make that as attractive as possible, that that would be something that, um, not just you or the board would want, but they can assure that the parents and the principals and everybody would want to see that as well.
Uh, I'm, I'm doing our, so we are just going to throw this in front of everybody, I mean, which is keep, to need to give up care from our funding. At the end of the day, we also need to comply with the requirements that they say, oh, this, um, asking, you know, for, um, burning money to save. But this is the little things that the parents, many parents don't understand, what is the risk for this? And, um, many, um, parents, so that's the reason why I brought this.
Thank you.
Any other question, discussion?
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, first I just want to thank the, our music folks that came out tonight to speak so eloquently on the benefits of music. Um, we are all in agreeance with you, it is something that is very important to us, the arts here in Danbury are very important for us. Um, we have had to make some musical changes, as you know, um, and I just want to talk a little bit about that. Some, some are actually a benefit and others we're still working on. And so, it's part of, of sort of the budget reduction process, we've had to reevaluate a lot of the programming, the way that we're able to staff. Um, and we've had, uh, general music classes starting in, in grade three and grade four and grade five, um, for some time, those are our students' special area courses. And, but we haven't necessarily had instruments or taught instruments in those classes. And so, as our programming has been reviewed, um, when it came to our ability to staff everything that we were continuing to do, um, we decided that, you know, if we didn't have the full staffing, at the very least that we could do was to embed instruments for all kids and not just the kids who signed up for the lessons for a small group of individual lesson, but instruments in across for all those grades. Um, so in grade three into next year, um, the recorder will be purchased annually for students, um, to learn how to play that. So, every student, whether they really wanted to sign up for lessons or not, will learn how to play the recorder. In fourth grade, it's, in their general music education class, students play the ukulele and learn how to. In fourth grade, in their general music education class, students play the ukulele and learn how to play the keyboard. And so those are things that we haven't had in place previously. What we're unable to offer are those, the extra FTEs. So we had some positions that were not backfilled as a result of some of the moves that we had to make. And so we've been massaging the schedule and massaging the schedule. So we're no longer able to offer those individual lessons for, for, you know, grade three students. We are going to be able to offer, after lots of working on rearranging the teacher schedules, the strings to the students who had it in grade three who were rolling up to grade four, so to provide that continuity. The band was a little bit more difficult, but we're still looking at that. And every maintaining everything that we currently have in place for grade five, which is strings and the band. So there was some individualized instrumental lessons lost. One of the biggest reasons that happened with that is that the the FTEs that are used to deliver those individualized lessons or those very small group lessons are are great. So the number, the ratio to student for a full-time FTE is quite, quite low, which makes the the cost quite high. And so as we look to evaluate the cost of what we have left in place, we added the musical instruments into grades three, into grade four to make sure that we are trying to counterbalance some of the effects of that. So we are able to offer strings in grade four for those who have taken it. Grade five remains the same, strings and band. But that grade three becomes a little bit harder to fund in this environment for those lessons. We did speak to some of our high school musical staff, talked about, brought some of the music folks together to talk about the way to sort of build the program up. They were pleased that instruments would be put into grades three and four and so that there's a stronger foundation for all students coming in in the hopes that would also spark some more interest into grade five so that students coming into the middle school would all have some foundational knowledge, but also maybe that much more. And so while we feel like that, you know, the individualized lessons are are a tough pill to swallow, we do feel like adding those instruments into the curriculum, grades three and four is definitely an added benefit that goes across all schools. And so we're going to continue to work on it. The staff is also pulling our music staff right now to see if they have any interest in doing lessons, providing lessons as part of our ELP after school, before school or after school. And so then that would be site-based, so if we can get a staff member who would want to provide those lessons, we're also able to add that in. And so depending on what that interest level is and the staff members' interest in doing that, we can offer that through ELP as well. So we're continuing to work on it because we do agree it's important and we know how much our students enjoy it and how forward it is. So I just wanted to provide that update. And then an official letter will be going out to anybody who's had signed up or was interested in those lessons to clarify what the offerings are for next year.
Any questions?
My only question is maybe I haven't heard this before. So if I'm in third grade, I will not be receiving any type of musical.
So so you're coming into grade three next year. You will have your general music class, but what's new is that you will learn how to play the recorder now.
Okay.
All students will learn.
But no strings?
No, the recorder in grade three.
Okay.
We didn't have strings in the general music class prior. So this is new, so we're adding the instruments in. So we'll be able to purchase those through Title IV, which which allows us to purchase some musical instruments. A lot of our areas, surrounding schools also do do that as well. It's fairly common, it was not common here, so we're mad at that. If you are third grade currently and you're playing strings and you go to fourth grade, for those students who are in it, we'll maintain that with the existing staff that we have.
I understand.
If if you're trying to enroll new in fourth grade, we don't quite have enough staff to do it, but we're trying to maintain for the students who were originally participating.
So I guess it's sort of misleading because under the impression that no one in third grade will be receiving.
They won't be receiving the individual or small group lessons. But they will have an added benefit of learning the recorder in third grade, all third, all grade three students, not just one to a previously sent from music.
Yes, Teresa. Um, it says K through five, so what about K first and second? We're going to say the same?
Yeah, so this was just really just mainly affected the three, five. We didn't have instrumental to pull out in K one and two, so that really started in in grade three for us.
So strings is fifth grade, if you don't know.
Well, if you were in grade three and you're rolling up to grade four, and you were in strings, we'll maintain those lessons if you still want them. And then if you're rolling, if you're in grade four and you go up to grade five, strings and the band are available to to everybody.
So you have recorder in in third?
Recorder in third.
In fourth, what are you doing?
Ukulele and keyboard.
Okay.
Yeah, so they'll learn two things, a little more frames up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
And we'll send a clarification email out to parents so that they're fully aware of the changes.
Because of it?
It is, it is.
Does not?
Of course.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you address the tuba?
We did address the tuba.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that.
So we were, we had some students who, was it you that came with the tuba? No, it was not you.
It was my friend.
It was your friend, you were together, that's right, in the city council. But we did, uh, we did work on getting, we had them submit a list of all their most of, you know, the most important items that they need, and so we started to work down that list. And we have a small little fund that we're going to continue to keep an eye on to supplement so that they can be Cheshire. Yeah, it's great to know all about it, I live near Cheshire. We have to be Cheshire. Okay, so provided in the packet, so I'll, I'll back up a little bit. So at the finance committee meeting, um, we presented, I presented a table of the staffing, um, and staffing allocations. I think it is exhibited in a packet, it is eight. The table that's in here is slightly different because it, we realized that we needed to update some names that were no longer returning or that were, had been vacant, had been vacant. In addition, there was one name that was on there that was actually in the union, and this is an example. So we did peel that off to make sure that the record was accurately updated. And so the list that you have in front of you are the suggested and recommended raises as according to the Organization for for School for Staff or Exempt Staff 2024-25 school year. I know that there was some consternation about that and some points were raised about that. And I want to make sure that provides some opportunity for the board to to engage in that discussion so that we can, we can work through that together. So I will say, just to preface, that as part of the staffing, start as part of my duties, that I have to present staffing plans to ensure that those raises distributed equitably across the school system. And I know that perhaps that this has been a change, I think, one of the, in the practice, but not necessarily the policy. And I, I want to make sure that, you know, going forward, that, you know, I think one of the things that I've tried to do in in this role in a short time is to read policies, understand why we've done things we have in the past, that we've done in the past. The presentation of these has been done not necessarily in a public forum. I thought it was important to do that for, I don't know, for transparency, that's something that I'm committed to, which is why we thought I should go at least into the finance committee first for that discussion and then making sure that it comes to the board here as as presented so that it is part of the public record and that it's not done in a, in a, in a different format as maybe as it has been done before. Yes.
You, you referenced some policies in that. Can please read those policies to us as they're, as they're written?
So which one?
It is forty-one, forty.
Forty-one, forty. Compensation of Central Office Staff. Board of Education believes that appropriate and equitable compensation plan should be established for exempt administration and support positions for central office. The aim with this compensation plan is to be attract and maintain competent employees. Benefits for such personnel should be equal to those of other comparable employees in the school system. Additional compensation benefits may be provided in recognition of meritorious service. Yep, by July first, the Board of Education shall approve an allocation of salary and benefit adjustments to implement the compensation plan and reflect changes in the economic environment in which the school system and its employees operate. The superintendent shall report annually to the board concerning implementation of this policy. Do you want me to read forty-one?
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Forty, okay.
It appeared to me as there were, um, as as with the document here, the line that separates the exempt staff from the cabinet.
Correct.
Um, so one of the things in the policy, those are also distinguished, do you know what I mean? One is, um, as we go down in the policy, one is the actual central office exempt staff. And I'm assuming that's the bottom category here. And so it is very confusing to me when the board is handed one document to vote on and it's not separated, hasn't separated in the policy. It's a little concerning when we sat in our finance meeting and given the, or asked, our chair asked for, um, legal recommendation as to the policy. And I'm now I'm a bit confused because in reading the policy, I start with, um, the first half of it in which it states by July first, the Board of Education, that's us, shall approve an allocation for salary and benefit adjustment to implement this compensation plan and reflect changes in the economic environment in which the school system and employees operate. Later on in the bottom, it again states that the superintendent may request, and that's the request that we've had here, and the board may approve. And yet we were specifically directed in that meeting two afternoons ago that it was not necessary to even bring it before the board, that it was out of courtesy, um, that we're even, you know, out of respect and courtesy for the board, that it's even presented to us. And so, um, I'm a little concerned, again, I'm new, but I'm a little concerned that we as a board would have, um, information put in front of us and not go back to the policy or question or, um, not know for ourselves, regardless of the reasons for the increase. One of the comments was is that the exempt staff, they are not part of the contractual staff. But the, the other thing in here that we have to be very careful, we also have policy twenty-one hundred in which we've asked and expressed our concern about realigning, reorganizing, some concerns with roles within the central office staff. And yet in here, it states that job descriptions that include the principal duties of each position will be maintained. We've asked for that, I've asked for that information. And looking going forward, what does the realignment, reorganization look like based on the concerns and recommendations that the board members have had? And then we move on to policy twenty-one thirty-one, the superintendent's responsibilities for personnel and staffing. Now, board, understand that our duty is to, the policies in the board, that's what runs the district. And if these policies, that as they stand, are not serving what our district, our students, our community needs, then we need to revisit these policies. So those are my initial comments.
Any other comments?
Teresa. Based on what we needed said, we were told we can't, we don't vote on, yet the policy says we do, or approve it. And that's not the information we were given at the committee meeting.
Yes, Kim.
In looking at the policy though, what it says is that the Board of Education should approve an allocation for salary and benefit adjustments. Not that we will set the schedule, not that we will be responsible for determining whether or not those things go through, but rather that we will approve an allocation, which was part of the overall initial budget that we approved once we got our number back from the city. So when everybody around the table voted on that budget, inclusive in that budget was an allocation for the raises and the benefits. So we didn't pay that way to vote. And I think, you know, as far as the organizational piece is concerned, that, you know, we definitely have conveyed to the superintendent that that is something that we're looking for as a board. From my perspective, I think the urgency of the last few months has been really focused on how do we reorganize the entire district around what our new budget situation looks like. And I'm, I'm looking forward to getting a plan as far as what the plans are for administrative, uh, central office level. But I'm, I'm trying to weigh against, you know, with the priorities the district have been for the last couple of months. I think that, you know, paying down what our budget looks like so that we have a plan, you know, for the start of the next school year, which will start July first. That's, you know, that's important for us to have in place. And my hope and expectation as a board member is that the time now that is available will be used toward an allocation plan and we will be presented with that plan so that we can, you know, have that conversation as part of this evaluation process.
Could I just say now, as, as a board chair, and, you know, some of you, I look up at the sky though. Since we have, since I have been on the board, since I have been on the board, what they came and learned she ought to get, the superintendents that I have served on, this would be my sixth superintendent, always brought this to the committee, one statement that these were exempted and this was counted. I'm making a recommendation to the board that we move these people forward. And always done in general, okay? Because that's our last meeting and we have to approve it before July first. So if we don't, then it's retroactive that as a board, if you go in into orders or whatever, we don't approve this, we still have to pay that, that retroactive fee, okay? And I'm not saying we got to rush you. I, to me, I personally, um, and I said the other night, the superintendent is who we hired to move this district forward. We can't not say, we can't, I guess you can, not say, we're not going to move Mary Jo. I don't want to support Mary Jo. And we don't have anyone right now in the place, we have no backup here for any, you know, compared to what it was when I came in, three or four people in the office, you could say Mary Jo's day after day. We had two of people, two people that were filled in for those people at that particular time. Everybody know what the budget crunch had been over the years. We're trying to stabilize and do certain things and move certain things forward. I look at this as the superintendent is bringing a recommendation to us. If we want, you know, to not vote in public, you know, as to are we going to move this forward, it should be her recommendation to us to move this forward so she can take care of all the necessary things that she need to do. We can't do alignment if she's not there to do alignment and reorganize. And I think those are some of a part of the discussion at other times. And I think those are some of a part of the discussion at other times. So, that was all that I really want to say. I, I will support the superintendent, okay?
Juanita.
With all due respect, I continue to say that nothing changes if nothing changes. Um, cut.
Okay, I'm gonna let you speak. I'm gonna let you speak. But change will come, but we have to have people in place to make those changes. And right now, we don't have those, we don't, we're not in a position right now to do those changes. The superintendent, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, is bringing something to us. We don't know three or four months from now. She's, right now, is in the interim position. Her contract is not starting until July one, okay? So, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at where I'm coming from. You know, everyone has a right to voice their opinion and concern. We are right near nine people aware on board, because we have two people out, okay? And this is why we have in this open discussion, okay? So, you can voice your concern. Okay, Juanita.
I believe that we were put in a terrible position as a board, in a very confusing position for me, maybe not for the other members on the board, to have one discussion two evenings ago, in which we were told that, no, there, there is no need for a vote, there's no need for a motion, there's no need for approval. It is just a presentation. And so, now I'm very much confused when you use the terms, let's approve it, I make a I'm not sure that we're in line with the rules of order or procedure. And again, I'm just speaking as moving forward, because it's my, my understanding that this is already a done deal. It was put into the budget, and I'm going to take accountability and responsibility for not having looked at the line item in the budget. We put forth a budget for one hundred eighty-one million, and that was included in there. When it was, as it was said in our meeting, when it was cut back to a hundred and sixty-something million, we started cutting back because we were at a fiscal cliff, which we also noted, we're going to be at again next year. And so, it behooves these board members, whatever you, we do tonight, regardless of that, that we need to keep our eyes keenly on what's going on the next time. And as I said, I'll take accountability and personal responsibility for not reading between the lines.
Teresa and Dan Lauren.
The hundred eighty million we didn't get, we got a hundred sixty-seven million, a hundred sixty-seven point five. Thirteen million essentially has to be cut from that proposed budget. One would think common sense would limit any raises, you know, fifty percent, point five percent, less than the four percent. Give me a break, why not two percent? And I've got, I've got to point out, two years ago, Kevin did not take a raise because of the budget. He did not take a raise. Yet, I'm just pointing out, I'm just pointing out, this was two years ago. And all this leads up to the area that's to include in that hundred sixty-seven, as opposed to the thirteen million we didn't get. So, I'm a little, I'm just astonished. There's no caps on some of these positions. I, 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 so it just compounds every year, every year. Not, this is nothing personal, this is all about the money. And if we don't hold ourselves accountable, then what are we doing here?
Lauren and Dan Rich.
I just, I have to say that if I didn't support Kara, I wouldn't have voted for her to be the superintendent. So, I support her. And again, I didn't look deeply into the budget and didn't know that this was already voted on, so that's, that's on me. That's it.
And I think Lauren, what has happened, I think maybe, and maybe it's me, if I'm wrong, but the dollar amount, Kim, if I'm right, is already, it was put in the budget past, this is money that's already allocated the previous year, okay? It's not money that we're adding to the budget or we have to go look for. It's money that when we give, and if I'm wrong, our finance director to come in, when we sit around negotiating with the different parties and stuff, we're to keep certain caps at three, at four percent, okay? And that's how it comes up as for us, this money was allocated the year passed. It's not new money.
Then, is that something, we should see these numbers prior to June, and then we can have a better understanding?
Yeah, Karen, okay. Yeah, I think you're saying that. I think part of the, part of the issue, I think, is the timing. I, I have to say, you know, understanding that the, because there'd certainly be greater dialogue, I think, that we have, but the, the timing of when this has, has occurred in the past has been at the superintendent's evaluation meeting, which is behind closed doors.
Right.
Really different from the superintendent evaluation, it's a completely separate entity.
Right.
And so, in looking at policy and understanding what these things are, the idea that the, that they should be put out into public forum, that it should have, go under the purview of a finance eye to say, this is what was budgeted for, this is what was voted on. The presentation of, of the salary schedule is well below what was the allocation. The percentages that are in there are distributed as part of the duties of applying this equitably across the system, okay? We have not gone back to unwind, undo, or ask for other groups to rescind their raises, to not take their cost of living adjustments. We would never do that. That is something that, you know, this is, this is a group each year. One of the reasons and the benefits for the exempt status is that the superintendent must put together a, a team to get the job done. In this environment, and on this list, there are several positions that aren't being filled. The biggest one on the list not being filled is my own. One of the things, even in my own contract without a sign, was that, and it was a port to this board to make sure that my duties were reassigned by October, there's language in there about that, and then I would help to reorganize that, those duties, which I fully intend to do. We have experienced staff loss, we are continuing to experience staff loss. The, the numbers here in this office, but also the caseloads of our OTs, PTs, and everyone else on that list are higher than ever, okay? Some of the jobs, a good number of the jobs are highly specialized jobs, that if we don't remain competitive, the, the, the three percent and the three point four percent are reflective averages, and in some cases below, of the other percentages that were provided. These groups do not get a step, there are no longevities, there are no, there's no overtime. None of that occurs with this group. It is a one-year at-will employee for the most part, except for those who have a multi-year contract, okay? And there are the, there are very few benefits for that group that are, that are not provided that other groups enjoy in bargaining positions. And so, each year, to represent that group, it's under my purview to provide the appropriate percentage increase, whether that be a cost of living adjustment, or if we want to say, an actual raise, okay? Most often, even if, if, even if in some of the other groups, their, the raise is a zero or a one percent, staff still move up on steps to reflect cost of living and movement in years of service. And so, that, again, on an exempt list doesn't happen. And so, we provide those steps and that movement on behalf of that exempt list, okay? I think, or moving this conversation around the budget setting process time and the appropriate time habit, it has, it has traditionally come very late in the year, as it is now, you know, for some reason, you know, just from a, from a practical matter, if this meeting didn't happen tonight and school year ended, I'm not sure what we would, what we would do if, you know, providing clarity around those things, right? Yeah. We continue to talk about those things.
We have a call meeting to vote on.
Sure. It's not necessarily a vote. Vote takes place around the budget time. And so, I guess what I'm saying is that the conversations that are relative to this, I think should take place closer to that time period for this group. That's my, that's my recommendation moving forward. And it's odd to have it, to have had it embedded in the superintendent evaluation process as the last and final meeting.
Louise.
Oh, I just have a couple of questions. This will be my third round with this. So, why the last two years did we vote on this issue? Because there were votes. And I think there's actually votes passed in my time on the board, so I'm not sure why, and I don't know why it was on the agenda and then taken off the agenda, so that's my question. And that's just procedural. And, and I think that, you know, we can, we're setting a precedent. And I know the precedent was already set because we have voted every year on these and to approve it, you know? And I'm not, and this is not even a discussion of the amounts, I'm talking, now we've opened up a different can of worms now, because now, you know, this is a conflict, because we've done this every year, and now all of a sudden, this year, we're changing it. And not that I don't want to approve this, but I want to be able to say, yeah, I gave you, I gave you my seal of approval, or, you know what, maybe I, I, I think we need to kind of approach these numbers a little bit better. If that is the case, why weren't we given this sheet with the budget? And I think that that would have clarified a lot. If policy is not clear, then that's now something we need to take up with the policy committee to clarify that procedurally. But I think that the board needs to still maintain a certain sense of oversight with this, because, not for you, I, this has nothing to do with you, but I'm thinking in the future, so superintendent can come to us and say, I'm giving ten percent raises, and you proved it in the budget, and you proved it in June, we didn't have this, and now all of a sudden, I'm putting through ten percent, and the boards, the eleven of us around this table saying, well, we can't do anything about that. And then, you know, what is our role at that point if that is the case?
I'd like to respond to that, because it's a great point. And I actually use that example, I said, well, what is to prevent, because we, as we were working through these policies, I said the same thing, what is to present, prevent me from giving Teresa or Lauren on my team or, or on this exempt less than fifteen percent raise? And what it is, is it's, the allocation is, is a number. So, let's just say the allocation is fifty thousand dollars. So, what that would have been is the four percent, the full list, right? Let's just pretend that that full list was, that the, that the four percent represented forty thousand dollars of a, of an increase over the sum total of that sheet, right? That was the four percent. That forty thousand dollars is the allocation with which I apply raise and compensation within that number. If Teresa did such an exceptional job, or her job changed in such a, such a manner that we needed, I felt that we needed to do something different to retain her, compensate her differently, she has a unique skill set, I may come back to you and say, guess what, I need a little more beyond that forty thousand dollars, I need forty-five thousand dollars, and here's why, beyond that original allocation. So, while these, these percentages, if I can just grab this, because mine's in the binder, please. While these percentages are all very equal across the board, that may not be my recommendation in the future. I may say, we're gonna pause on a few of these, or, or adjust a few others, but within the allocation that was approved, that has been budgeted. And the reason for that may be, is that, so let's just say, you know, one of these, or two of these positions that are on the list, maybe it's a data position or assessment position, is no longer, the competitiveness for those positions and the rate of the area has changed, or work, that has, position needs, needed to reset to keep up with a particular competitive percentage and range for a job, I may choose to skew the percentage to try to achieve a more competitive wage to retain an important position, more so than others on the list. And, and that is what allowed, will allow me to maintain a competitive team, a highly competitive team, that will fulfill the duties of the strategic plan and the, and the plans that we put in together. Now, you have an opportunity, so what's the oversight? You can say, we no longer want to employ Cara Casemiro at the end of my contract. And I, I say this with full love, that this is, that this is how you get there, and I, you know, I hope that that's not the case, and I hope that we work together and we work through things like this. And I, I deeply respect the opinions, and I get, I get what everybody is saying, and I understand optics. But there isn't, there is, there is a way for you to exercise your will on that, if you need to.
But why no vote? Why every year we've had a vote, and why no vote this year?
Right.
That's my only question.
Yes, you did.
Well, I just, I just want to, I, I'd rather not do that. It's really because of the policy. And I have a new person coming in, I'm looking, you want fresh eyes on things, I'm doing that, but I'm also doing that in every facet of the school system, and I'm hoping to make improvements, but I'm also about transparency and clarity. And so, I had some big questions as to why this is even, was even being done in a superintendent evaluation at the end of the year, outside of the purview of the camera rolling and that people having the dialogue. And you get to express your thoughts on it, and at times we may not agree, or there may be confusion on that, and it's an opportunity to work those thoughts out in public, as it should be, particularly when it comes to numbers and finance. And, 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 you know, the, the result of that dialogue and conversation may have consequences for all of us on either side, and, and we'll have to live with those things, but it's, but it is transparent and it's out in the open, and, and we have an opportunity to have that conversation. And I think that that's one of the most important things here, and I think it is going to take some time to work through, maybe a rationale on why, why this is. And I understand that maybe we need more time together to, to get, to achieve that and to get to those places, which I'm committed to. But in the, but in the interim, I have to field a competitive, a team that's going to stay here, that I can retain, that are picking up extra duties and will pick up extra duties as a result of not backfilling some old positions. And I have to exercise my professional judgment and knowledge about the jobs and positions that exist and or need to exist in the future for us to achieve the goals that were set together. And so, I'm hoping, you know, and I, and again, I respect deeply the, the, what the board is saying. I do want to clarify one thing, if I may, Teresa, on the, on the raises. That was a couple of years ago, Dr. Salpas Correll was the one who did not take, take a raise so that his cabinet and his team, so he can still field a team that, that will maintain a team that was to be in place.
Oh, did he? Oh, did he? Yes, he did.
I think he was like a half a step, and so we acknowledged that. Sure. Just giving him.
We have.
Sure. But I, you know, I, I do want to say that, again, in this environment, retaining staff is a huge priority, not just for this exempt list, but for all of us. And, you know, moving forward, and it's something that I think we should continue to talk about.
I have, it's Janelli.
No, two people.
Okay. Julie and Dan, Amina, did you have a question? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. No, Julie, Dan.
I just want to, basically, through session, everything that came off of this.
We can't hear you, I can't hear you.
Can you hear everybody?
Yes.
I just want to, I'll try to begin, I mean, I just want to, I think that everything came off on a misunderstanding or maybe not using the proper language. If we need to submit a vote, and it's not about how long you've been on the, on the board, other than why can you go into the board? That's one thing. I want to add also as well, at least as you said, some of these positions now have a, a cabinet. Because when we see all the group, and we see, like, for example, professional therapist for behavior and analyst, some of us might not understand why there's for behavior and analyst, some of us might not understand why there's so much difference in the pay. Now, there's the time gap between each one might be one or two years, less one. And in another sense, it's like, I understand, I also understand, and I'm, I don't think that none of us is judging your management. But at some point, we also need to get more understanding, because you are the one who manage your personnel, like, and at the day, we also have to put ourselves here. And, I mean, we all know that the board has been in fire for the last two years based on our decisions. So based on that, from the opinion I just said, I think this is my idea, misunderstanding on might be a, not using the proper language, but it's also the fact that we miss information here, like, why we have, I mean, we were on a fiscal table, and now we're deciding we have this, I understand, call them, right? Because we live in, I also understand that some of these positions that went way over on my end, the way I see it compared to the same position at a timeframe, they might be over. That might be some of the issues that we might not understand. And I just want to add that, because sometimes it's very difficult to understand. I was on the part of the finance community, I was not in here, I don't know what was floating on. And if we have to vote, yes, I understand that, but it's also the fact that, what Anita said, that we're not supposed to break that out, I mean, it's disturbing, because it's important, and we have to bring our faces in front of everybody. So that would say, thank you very much.
Anita?
Thank you.
You know?
I'm happy to hear the way we're discussing this, because I think that is important, this is our responsibility, is to put our input in, to make the process better, and to express our particular opinions. That being said, I think Louisa did a good job summarizing Anita and Kate's positions that they made. At this point here, since I was chair, I am chair of Finance Committee, and made a comment yesterday, which was my interpretation or something, I just want to get it clarified, that it appears to me, and I'm gonna ask him to, let me know if that's correct, it appears to me that in different interpretations, or the policies as decided are ambiguous, and if that's the case, then I think it's something for us in the future to change. At this particular point, we brought, discuss better ways that this can be presented in the future. But as it stands tonight, again, I may be remiss in what I said yesterday as interpretation or something, of what are our obligations as a board tonight, following the interpretation, legal interpretation, not my understanding of it, as to what the policies mean. I think that's important. Anita, you know, I believe you stated the same thing. If we have a policy that says one thing, and we're saying something else, but if it's a policy, I certainly agree with that. If I may have stated a wrong interpretation, said this on more crap, I do apologize. But what are we to do tonight to follow our policy, and then to move this ahead for a more efficient process in the future?
Thank you. I want to start with your question about why is this different? For many years, there had been lots of discussions about how this goes out for exempt folks, for whether the cabinet or whether it's other non-union, non-contractual employees. And in private, private superintendents, I have had that conversation, that you have policies that should be followed when we talk about this patchwork of compensation. You have, as the employer for about 2,000 people, a patchwork of different kinds of employees. You have unionized employees with contracts, as Dr. Casemiro points out, with STEPS and with GWIs. You have some contracts which, at this moment, are in negotiations for renewals, that will also have designated increases. And then you have this patchwork of at-will employees. There are all the people on this list, people that can be hired and fired, can decide to leave at any point in time, but who have identified wages. So that's the first big idea, all different pieces. What the policies call for, and what Dr. Casemiro has sat down and parsed through line by line, is that our obligation to this board is to present her plan for what this organization looks like, and for how these folks are compensated. And annually, that then should be presented to. I agree, and have said for many years, this should be much earlier in the process, that this is always something that is kind of an activa and happens at the end. But it should be part of a presentation, as she used a one sliver of today, about what one piece of this patchwork looks like. It should happen earlier, it should happen as part of the budget process, this conversation with you. But what this policy says, and I would urge you to read both the policy and the regulations, is it puts into place for you very clear rules about how to go through this process. And it mimics, if you want an analogy, it mimics very much when the city makes an allocation to the board, the city cannot tell the board how to spend that allocation. That's very clearly established. You can spend it how you see fit for educational purposes. They cannot come in and say, you shall spend this on wages, you shall get more safety advocates, not their purview. Similarly, what the legislature has done in calling the superintendent, the chief executive officer, is establish the same kind of a system, that you all approve the allocation for salary and benefits, when you approved your budget in May, after the allocation came from the city. When you approve that line item budget, you are approving a system. And CEO has a authority to assign wages within that system, and also to present to you the plan of how she intends to do it. I, Kate, I appreciated your comment earlier. It's been a very busy tenure for the superintendent, and we have not had the time and space to talk about reorganization ideas that you all have that are good ones, and those are on the docket now. And I think that to meet this policy and these regulations, the time to do that, to talk about reorganization, and how that fits within your goals, is an important one. But for compensation, this system is clear. The law says that your superintendent is a CEO, her contract says she's a CEO, and your policies say she is the CEO who assigns the allocation, and then it gives you regulations on how to do it. We can certainly get better at the regulations and at the transparency, but this system is precisely designed to give you transparency. Through the course of the year, there are many times when the superintendent comes and says, I want to change the rate of pay on this, I want to give this board person more money. This has happened, and it has not happened by coming to the board and having a vote. It has been within the purview of prior superintendents. So this is a process that kind of got caught in the middle here, but it doesn't comply with your regulations. You certainly can go back and have conversations in your policy committee about this policy, but you can't write a policy that overrides statutory duties that are vested in the superintendent. You can tweak around it, but the goal here of this policy was to come under the statutory framework, and then to provide you transparency at various points in the year, so you can see what's happening. And then the accountability is during the course of the evaluation process throughout the year with your superintendent, is where you express concern about management style, about the selection she's made, about the choices. But that is how this is set up. And I'm sorry if you think I made it up, but I didn't. This is how the policy reads, and I think we have an obligation now, having brought this to all of you to discuss, to follow what's here, to change it with the extent that you can, to talk about the plan and what it's gonna look like going forward in a measured way, so that not only do you understand what's happening in a form that's not, you know, one of these meetings where everybody gets my points to talk, but in a form where we can talk about it, and you can make that the decisions that she's making as your CEO.
Thank you. Just to add to that. So it's my understanding that we tonight are correct in looking at this as a presentation, and basically have a discussion of opinions about it too. I go back to the interpretation and wording when Anita was reading one of the policies. Is this something that we could look at through the policy chair to make a change in wording, so it's not interpretive, to be ambiguous, to be more specific?
Yes, I think it's not ambiguous if you read it in conjunction with the regulations listed below.
Okay.
These two things are meant to be heavy.
Okay, that's probably my flaw, was I looked at the rest. Okay, thank you.
So as we move forward tonight, I think one of the recommendations was for the policy committee to vote more carefully, that was some of those things. But more concerning is being consistent year to year. So my concern now is, I'm hearing that for the past few years, there was a motion and it was voted on. And yet, now are we in a moment of change? We don't need to.
Thank you. You've never needed to vote on that in the past. So that is, that's where the confusion is. And as in reading through these, you know, that part of it, that part of it is clear. What's confusing about it is that hasn't, that had been past practice. And so there, those two things have come into clash with one another. And so I, that is something, again, as we go through the policies and we're working through these, you know, things, other things may come up that will have to, that may have been practiced, we just have to talk about them, right? As we, as we move forward, as we develop the budget, as we do things, I don't think it's gonna be related to this, I'm just saying as an example, that, you know, when, again, in the spirit of transparency, you know, we're putting, implementing a change to actually implement the policies that we have, it's not necessarily changes to change in practice. I would want to add, like, if you know, our.
May I just add one comment about the past practice, because I consider a couple of these successes. The notion of past practice is a creature of labor negotiations. And so when your contract is unclear or ambiguous, you often will flood in what you've done in the past to define something that is not defined at all. Same thing happens when we interpret a law. If it's not clear, then you look to surrounding circumstances to fill the gaps of what's not clear. You have with this policy and its regulation clarity for which you don't look to past practice, you follow your policy. I just want to make that.
Yeah, I said past practice, I shouldn't have said that. That's a different term. Thank you, Karen.
Because right now, and I'm gonna get to you, Teresa, you know, and I'm going, for all the 15 years that I've served with the superintendent, it was always done this straight away, and we came out and we voted. And it was always in June, before our last meeting. So may I, if that's the clarification, that we need to go back to policy, and really sit down and discuss this and talk about moving it forward, and then the next time, we won't get, it would be here next year. It'd be pretty well straight and clean. Teresa?
I'm kind of puzzled, because we just went through those policies and updated everything. I mean.
We did not do that particular policy, it's actually on the June 10th agenda.
But it was over, it wasn't overlooked, it looked like it didn't need an update. Is that what it is?
No.
But we didn't do anything.
When we sit down for a policy meeting, our job is to go through the policies that come before us and have a conversation about them, and at that point, we can make decisions about whether or not we're gonna adjust them, even if there aren't any recommendations after adjusting them. That's our purview is.
No, I understand, I understand that. But if we overlooked that one, then we assumed that it was okay.
No, no, we haven't reviewed it yet, though.
I thought we were in the fourth, we were in the.
We are, we are, but the last meeting that we had scheduled for June 10th, which we had canceled, this particular policy, 414, was on that agenda. So we haven't gotten it, got to it yet, but as a first meeting, policy meeting that we have in the fall, this policy, we don't have to.
Louisa and Dan.
I understand that, that the policy may have been misinterpreted. What I can't wrap my head around is 20 years of voting on it, and then all of a sudden we don't. So I know you've read our policies over and over and over again, and I know everybody around this table has been around this district for a very long time, so it concerns me when, you know, all of a sudden, there's a different interpretation at the 11th hour. And again, I, it's a policy thing now, that I think that the, that's gone to the side. It's really just about how do we figure out how to clarify this, so moving forward, we are clear, there's no ambiguity with our policy, and there is no room for misinterpretation, and we set a precedent that can be clarified, stood behind, and the board around this table can, you know, leave our meeting knowing that we had the oversight of this group, just like we do all the other groups.
My understanding is, the reason, it was an action item, I'm mistaken. We changed our regular board meeting on the 19th, which is June 10th, okay, to tonight. So when we did that as a board, it was referred as a special meeting. Okay, I know, that's not the right term, whatever. But we could not come into this meeting, can't, all right, and amend the agenda to add an action item. So that's why we're not, right?
So, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure I understand Louisa's question, because I'm not sure that what you're referencing is what she's asking about. If I understand correctly, Louisa, are you saying that you want to have some, want to understand that the process will need to clarify this policy, so that ambiguity that we're talking about right now on the table, that everybody's kind of not sure about how to handle, so that we eliminate that?
Correct.
If I understand correctly, that's done through the process of a policy review?
Okay.
So we would have that conversation in the policy committee? We would discuss the specific policy that would impact this? And then, out of the policy committee, we'd make a recommendation to the full board for a first grade and then a second grade? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's it. I just want to make sure that we know that, I think the discussion is far past the raises at this point, and now we've added and opened up a can of worms, and now we see that there is an issue with the policy. And I just want to make sure that we address that, so when it come next year, we're not sitting here having the same discussion.
Any else? Yes, Ms.?
I just want to say, I wasn't on the finance, I'm not on the finance committee, and I wasn't on that call, but there's been other instances where I've sat in on a finance meeting and decisions were made, and there was confusion, or we asked Karen for an opinion, and I've come here to the next board meeting and we're voting, and it was not going to happen. So this isn't the first time, it actually happened for the budget, the actual budget, and it's happening again. So my concern, and I know that we're all kind of sitting here with our heads twisting, trying to figure out all of the changes, right? So I, you know, where we've, and I agree with Anita, asked for a lot of information on how everything is happening. But we'll come here, and the next time I'm sitting here, we've eliminated the middle school, it's clear that there's been a lot of conversations with other people, either in the city or in the district, and we are the last ones, I feel, to find out. Sometimes I read it in the paper first. So I understand what Louisa's saying, if we were going to make that change, I'm on policy with you and we cancel it, and, you know, it's always about this timing. I think it's a great idea if the city's talking about trying to figure out a real operational, you know, model moving forward, I agree with that. So this is kind of tough, because, you know, I'm one about, you know, the rules and the policy, and how does this look, but I also understand how hard everybody works and what our situation is. So I just want to say, I know that we throw a lot of stuff out at you and ask you to, you know, try to make, so I think, I agree with Julie, I think I'm sure it was a misunderstanding. But again, that happened when we were talking about the budget itself, and it was, it didn't get voted on or the motion, and then it came here to the board, and you were just mentioning a first read, a second read. I find that when the finance committee does have a meeting, and I usually try to, you know, attend and listen and participate, there isn't.
there isn't that second read, it is discussed, it's here, and it's voted on. And it is, if we knew that there was policies being discussed prior to the June 10th meeting, I wasn't aware of it, I don't know if you were, but something that we should be flagged, so we would know. Because I think policy, we've been kind of just really looking at what Kate is recommending, and what we feel, you know, does it really serve us, does it not, is it gonna make more of a problem? But we haven't really looked at, and you're new, obviously, to the position, to the role, and started implementing the changes that we're looking to make, right? With this, with you, because I'm a good manager. Again, I hope that we definitely communicate better, I don't think anybody gives attention or anything, but those finance meetings, yeah, I mean, whatever that decision is at the end of that meeting, I just would like a little bit of a breather to digest it. That's all, thank you.
We're brief. Michelle, I was just like you say, it's still all of our committees that we need to tighten up and really understand and other that there. And I know we can't be to every committee meeting, but this is how we learn, because there are changes. And sometimes you might not be able to make the meeting where the decision is made, and then you come back, or the decision was made, not what you're part of. So, you know, we're all gonna learn in this. And I just hope that we can continue to work together, understand, and, and, and as the committees come forward, we have to ask questions and do the best that we can, as far as our knowledge concerned.
Okay. What's next?
Okay, board chairperson, I'm very brief. We had a busy couple of months this year. I would like to thank you all for your support, attending the meetings, working together, graduations, all the other affairs that we have attended. And I hope as we move forward as a group, that if you have questions, you know, I don't think anyone is afraid to call me. I might yell first couple of times, but we can talk it on and move on, okay? So let's work together, I'm brief, I'm gonna be here during the summer, and we're gonna do anything, we can talk, and then get prepared for September, it's gonna be here before we blink our eyes, okay? Enjoy the summer, and relax, and put a smile on your face, okay? I need a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion, Jay. I'm sagging my due.